All right, it is 6:06 PM. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wausau School District. The first item actually is that we will do roll call. Jan Boucher. Jeff Lee.
Here.
Beth Martin.
Here.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Teresa Miles.
Yes.
Jane Roche.
Yes.
Lance Trollop.
Yes.
Lee Webster.
Yes.
Trish Zonker. Present. All right, please stand by the front of the podium, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the next item on the agenda is the reading of the mission statement. It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Next agenda item is the resolution of commendation. So, I would like to ask Ms. Fox, actually, if you don't mind. So...
Let's move over here.
Okay. I think we do need to vote on this, but...
Sure.
Okay, so the resolution of commendation committee recommends the following individuals for recognition. Renee Eisen. Renee Eisen is the kitchen manager at John Muir Middle School and was nominated for the resolution of commendation by Karen Fox, Director of School Nutrition Services. Renee was named the 2019 Manager of the Year for the State of Wisconsin by the School Nutrition Association.
Last year, Renee's kitchen entertained an average of 161 student guests for breakfast and another 700 student guests for lunch. Renee's love for the district reaches into many areas outside of school and nutrition, such as teaching after-school programming, assisting with after-school sporting events, and answering questions for students with essay-writing challenges. Renee has never been afraid of the word "change", and she is willing to try new and efficient ways to serve food to students utilizing best-practice ideas from the many food shows and seminars that she goes to. What sets Renee apart is her ability to stay positive and do the right thing for the students and her coworkers. Renee is often called upon by other school managers in the Wausau School District and surrounding districts for school management guidance and support. Renee is a walking billboard for school nutrition. She leads by example, sparks enthusiasm in everyone she meets, and manages daily kitchen challenges with ease. By the way, did I mention that Renee serves as the local Chapter VII School Nutrition Association President and has held this position for the past seven-plus years? She has spent countless volunteer hours organizing chapter meetings, continuing education sessions, and fundraising efforts for the local chapter membership, which is comprised of over 20 school districts. I am honored that you are a School Nutrition Services Team member in the Wausau School District. Congratulations, Renee.
I'm seeking a motion to award this, okay?
Oh, yeah, before we can give it to you.
It's a nail-biter, but I'm seeking a motion to award the resolution of commendation to Renee Eisen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Should we move over here?
Yes. All right.
Go on this side.
Where are we going to go? And I'll take one more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. I would like to thank the school district because they made it possible. They opened up a new area for me. They sent, let me, I guess, what would you call it? Got to try out a national conference, which is something that not very many of us get to go to, and it was unbelievable what I've learned and what has opened up to me. So, thank you. So, working here has been great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel free to...
That's where these came from. Very good.
Well, congratulations again, Renee. Thank you for everything you do for our district. And thank you also, Ms. Fox, for coming up. I was given this thing to read, and it was all your words, so it made more sense to have you do it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Professional Learning Academy Graduation Recognition. And the board will recognize the following individuals for completing personalized academies. When I call your name, please come up. Heather Trollop, Great Learning Leader Teacher Academy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, if you want to shake hands with everybody, you might.
Congratulations, Heather.
Thank you. Hello, sir.
If you don't mind, please, for everybody that'll come up, thank you.
I can't let anyone choose.
Alyssa Lor, Great Learning Leader Teacher Leader Academy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
John Kozovich, Differentiation Highly Qualified Teacher Academy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Carrie Uding, Professional Learning Community Teacher Leader Academy.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Deborah Hirsch, Professional Learning Community Teacher Leader Academy, Professional Learning Facilitator Teacher Leading Academy.
Thank you, Carrie.
Curriculum Writing Teacher Leader Academy and Literacy Highly Qualified Teacher Academy. Congratulations. Betsy Stangle, Differentiation Highly Qualified Teacher Academy, Professional Learning Community Teacher Leader Academy, Professional Learning Facilitator Teacher Leading Academy, and Curriculum Writing Teacher Leader Academy. Congratulations. Thank you. And Susan Holtster, Culturally Responsive Highly Teacher Academy,
Thank you.
Classroom Climate and Management Highly Qualified Teacher Academy, Professional Learning Community Teacher Leader Academy, and Professional Learning Facilitator Teacher Leading Academy. Congratulations. Thank you. I hope a big round of applause from... Thank you very much.
Just got to be able to get a photo.
Thank you.
Right, wonderful. Okay, thank you. I've been told to let you know, don't feel obligated to stay, of course, if you want to. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Spotlight on Education.
Good evening. For the Spotlight on Education for the month of September, we invited the co-chairs of the Marathon County School-Based Counseling Consortium to speak to you tonight. Noreen Salzman from the Center of Wellbeing and Jen Smith from Bridge Clinic are here to present you.
You're dead. Okay. Hello, good evening. Nothing like running in last minute. I apologize, I had another board meeting that ran over, that I could not meet. So, I'm glad I made it in time. Noreen and I are proud to be co-chairs this year. I've been co-chair since the inception, originally with Lee, ship away from Peaceful Solutions Counseling. Noreen has been a founding member on the consortium since its inception as well. And this year, she has stepped into the role of co-chair. We are now going to be doing rotating co-chairs for sustainability practice. So, what we wanted to do was just to give you an update a little bit about the counseling consortium as it is, how it came to be very briefly, and then kind of what our next steps are and where things are going, certainly leaving time for questions and answers that you may have. So, the Marathon County School-Based Counseling Consortium, just to back up a little bit, why did we embark on this? We started this because several years ago, there were multiple community factors that were coming together at the same time that really pointed to a need for groups to be looking at resiliency in youth. And however that looked, whatever we could do as mental health agencies, also with Lee Webster as a founding member as well, what could we do to make a positive impact? We were looking at 2015 and 2017 Marathon County Youth Risk Behavior surveys. Those are done at the school level initially in '15. It was at the high school level. In '17, it added in middle school data as well. And they were really indicating some things that were disturbing to, you know, school personnel, to the community at large, having impacts in our crisis interventions in the county that pointed to the fact that kids are needing some assistance. They are needing some tools in their tool belt. They're needing to build some resiliency and to get some access to some counseling to deal with stress and anxiety and depression, suicidality, all the things that can go along with that. The Marathon County Community Health Improvement Plan, that is in process of being updated now for 2021 and beyond. There were several indicators in there that also showed at the time that we had youth that needed to have interventions as well. The county health department received a Behavioral Health Changemakers Grant, which was a five-year, very large grant through multiple funders in the state that was also working on the same issue. And then the Partnership for Youth Truancy Reform Pilot was working on how do they work to really decriminalize truancy or flip that dynamic about when kids are getting into legal tract around truancy versus how do we get supports in place earlier to help maybe prevent that? And then Marathon County School Requests. And so, all of those things came together at the right time and gave the right supports for us to be able to create this consortium. The data from 2017 Youth Risk Behavior Survey showed this one statistic. Thirty-one and a half percent of students of high schoolers in those districts which participate in the Marathon County Youth Risk Behavior Survey described their mental health as not good. There is data that goes beyond that, that drills down from my mental health doesn't feel great to self-medicating behaviors, self-medicating behaviors in school, thinking about suicide, attempting suicide, being hospitalized for injuries related to suicides. There's a lot of data that drills down out of that. I mean, when you're looking at even two to four percent of, you know, 2,000 students alone that are taking the survey, that have attempted suicide or been injured in suicide, you know, those aren't numbers that we really want in our county. The consortium really is a collection of outpatient mental health agencies, some for profit, some nonprofit. We've come together. We are not a nonprofit unto ourselves. We're not a 501(c)(3), but we are a collaboration of agencies who have said, we're going to step up. We're going to work to embed licensed mental health therapists in the schools that would like to participate. No charge to the schools at all. We have a consortium agreement that we work on, that we all sign. We have certain agreements that we do so that we're all functioning the same way. One in particular is that we all need to be DHS 35 certified. And what that means is that we're certified by the state to provide outpatient mental health counseling services. If we are providing AODA services in the schools, we have to be DHS 75.13 certified. And that gave the schools and the districts some good assurance that the staff, the licensed personnel that are being placed in their schools have embedded. That was something that we heard loud and clear from the schools, that they really wanted to know, how do we assure the quality and the competency of the staff that your agencies are putting in our schools? And that's how we do that. We do that through those processes. We have many community partners. This consortium does not exist just in the vacuum of the clinics. We work really closely with multiple school districts, including yours. We have worked with, NAMI is another, the National Alliance for Mental Illness. We've worked with the United Way, the Voca Grant, some of those dollars. So, we have, the large consortium has multifaceted partners. The core program development groups are usually the clinics working on the operational pieces of things. So, the reason that we did a consortium is that no clinic can do this alone. When we did the initial needs assessment based on the percentages in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and then extrapolating that out to the student population in all of the schools in Marathon County, we would have needed about a 40 FTE. We would have needed about 40 full-time therapists to meet all of that projected need. Our initial goal was to pilot in 10 to 12 of the highest-risk schools. As it turned out, thankfully, we were able to actually pilot in our first half-school year by embedding counselors in all 57 schools across Marathon County. Now, it's not always full days. Some schools, it's a half-day, some days it's a full day. A couple of schools, we actually have several agencies serving for a day or two apiece, so we don't have full-time coverage. But we also haven't had quite the volume yet. We're not bursting at the seams. We are doing continual capacity assessments. Where do we have more referrals than can be handled? And what other agencies can step up or step in or increase FTE? Where are the referrals lighter, where we thought we would be busier, and maybe we can reallocate some resources? So, we're constantly doing those model shifts to make sure we can meet the needs. One of the other reasons why we did a consortium is that we created out of that an MOA, so a memorandum of agreement. It was vetted by a legal partner of ours who provided that for us and the schools and the school districts. And we based it off of the DPI guidance for School-Based Mental Health Counseling, which is, I believe, a 28-page document that they offer and gives really great guidance. So, we use that collaboratively to build, what does this agreement look like between us and the schools? What are the schools responsible for? What are we responsible for? What are we collaboratively responsible for? And that's been a nice guidance document to answer questions, everything from space use and privacy and who really owns the mental health records and how does billing work and all of those kinds of things. So, we talked about this a little bit as far as the needing capacity. Right now, we feel pretty stable on where we're at. Generally speaking, I think that we're all always hiring staff so that we have extra capacity, not only to backfill within our own clinics, because it's quite a commitment to send our staff out, but also to make sure that that community-based resource is still available. But as we have needs that increase and as this gains more traction in the schools that we can offer. One of the real beauties of the consortium model that we have found is that when we've had situations where clinics had staffing changes and suddenly a therapist decided that they weren't going to work anymore, or they had to go on a medical leave or had to move out of the area, we actually have yet to run into a situation where we couldn't cover that gap. And how we handle that is we put out kind of an SOS, and all of the clinics get together and say, who can step up and take this need? We've always had someone willing to step up and take that need. So, we've been able to cover the requests that we've had. Most of our clinics are at or near capacity. We do have a couple of the, some of the smaller schools, some of the more rural schools that maybe hasn't quite caught on with yet or are experiencing some other barriers to why kiddos aren't able to participate in therapy. But for the most part, we've been able to keep pace with what the needs are. Thank you. So, on the next steps, really addressing barriers. So, we have several arms to the consortium. One is the large consortium that I described with the partners. One of the other arms is our Program Development Group. That's really the nuts-and-bolts operational group for the consortium. Noreen has chaired the data group for quite a while. Do you want to talk about that data just a little bit and how it helps us assess?
Sure. As you see here, the impact of school-based counseling in Marathon County, these are data points from last year's data set that we collected. And essentially, what we chose to do as, in this school district and at DC Everest, was use a standardized tool as a pre- and then post-measure, usually at the beginning of the school year or at the time that the student has referred. And it might be interviewing the parent, the teacher, and/or the student, depending on their age. And at that time, it comes up with a particular score, measuring not only challenges that the student has, but also their strengths. And then at the end of the school year or at the time that that student is discharged from counseling, we'll take another measure. It's called a Strengths and Difficulties Questionnaire. There's quite a bit of research done with it. Our neighboring state, Minnesota, uses it in several of the other school districts within the state of Wisconsin. So, we chose this because we thought it would be a very fair tool to measure both strengths and difficulties. But the other piece is that at some point, we have some long-range vision of potentially comparing ourselves with either other school districts or perhaps as this grows as a movement, because we have seen this grow nationwide at this point, that there will be even other states that we may choose to compare data with longitudinally. So, that is one of the tools that we use every year. And this is some of the information that you see here before you, and I'll let you take a look at it because it's pretty self-explanatory. But quite clearly, all of the grades are showing a positive impact by the mental health counseling. And it's either through these scores, these SDQ scores, or what we call client satisfaction. And that client satisfaction data is also something that the schools help us collect towards the end of the year, at the end of counseling, which shows various areas that we measure in terms of a student's functioning in their home, in the school, with peers, how they feel about themselves, and how they feel about their lives. And then that is also represented here as well. And this piece of, I guess, it's both a marketing tool and an informational tool. We were very fortunate that the Public Health Grant was able to help with providing some of the funding to actually create, with Kinsey Green, this data laid out before you. And this is also a very nice tool that we've been using with parents and within the schools and schools. As we've talked about, why do this? Why do for our student? What's the importance of this and does it work? So, some things that we're looking at down the road is potentially, there's been some discussions with the Medical College of Wisconsin to see about taking this even further and gathering some longitudinal data. Because it's one thing to be able to say, this student in this year made some progress. It's a very big thing to say, this student who really needs some counseling in second grade and here in eighth grade, they've had it a couple of years or maybe every year if they needed it, and look at the difference between their academics, their social functioning, their emotional functioning. There's a lot of different things that we know that counseling can positively impact. So, those are some of the things that we're looking forward to. And a similar piece of information will be coming out this year as well. We just collated all of that data. And just to kind of give you a little bit of a sense of that collaborative piece, the schools have been instrumental in this significantly. Both Angie Lloyd has been very highly supportive of this, as well as the principals. Every year, we meet with each of the principals. Angie Lloyd sits in a lot of our meetings that we have and is an active participant. And without that close collaboration, I don't think we would be standing here giving you the kind of information that we have today. Because this is quite laborious. This is nicely packaged, but the devil is in the details. So, that high communication piece that has been really stressed amongst everyone and the openness and willingness, because schools are short on space, they're short on staffing, and for them to be able to welcome us as they have and really work out a lot of the details has been quite magnificent. So, I'll turn it back over to Jen.
Thank you. And to that end, one other data piece that we are starting to collect, although we don't have a pretty report for, is actually the school satisfaction survey. And so, we have also started at the end of last year.
Yeah, I mean, some of that in here too.
And we have a little bit of that in there. And we're continuing then to collect on the school satisfaction. You know, how is their communication with the therapists that are on staff? You know, what do they feel that we could be doing better? What do they think that we're doing really well that they want to see us preserve? So, that's another really important data point that we're looking at. So, some of the other next steps beyond the data are barriers. We are always looking at what the barriers are. Some of the barriers that we still face is that there are students who, for multiple reasons, are falling through the cracks for referral. One reason is they are referred. Everyone knows that they could benefit from counseling. We get the referral. We, when I say "we," I'm saying big W for the consortium as a whole. And then, for whatever reason, the paperwork that the parent needs to sign when that student is not 18 years old does not come back to us. We legally cannot see a child without a signed consent to treat. The only exception to that is if they are seeking AODA counseling services that can be a little bit younger. But we really only have them in the high schools right now and a couple of the middle schools. So, that's a big barrier. And there's no judgment around that. There's a lot of reasons why families choose or are afraid to have their child participate in counseling. Some of that is around perceptions of privacy. We have very strict guidelines. Really, the schools think of us as, and have done a very good job, I think, thinking of us as this is an outpatient mental health clinic that got plopped in this room in your school. And so, just how confidentially they operate when they're down the street is how confidentially they operate when they're in the school. But I think the perception around that might need some work so that the parents and guardians of these students are really assured that there is a barrier in information that won't be shared unless it's allowed to be shared and is in the student's best interest from a standpoint of, you know, how everyone can be positively working to help impact that child in school, whether it's, you know, the counselor themselves, the guidance counselor, you know, whatever staff are working with that child. So, paperwork issues is still a barrier. There are some financial barriers. Most of our kiddos, and we do track this, we do like to know what the payer source is for the kids. Because what we're always continually assessing is, if we have children who truly, truly, truly are uninsured, how do we make them, make sure that they get paired somehow in an agency that can bear the brunt of uninsured students better than some others? How do we make sure that that child's been assessed, that they might be eligible for some benefits and could be helped to sign up for some benefits for them and their family? There are a few kiddos who still fall through the cracks and don't have insurance, or more con... commonly, we have an agency assigned to that school that doesn't participate in that insurance plan. The consortium isn't going to dictate that every, every clinic participate in every insurance plan for a variety of reasons. And there are some insurances that we still have a little bit of problem with reimbursement, although that's getting much better. There was concern about that with the school location, but so far, we haven't had the denials that we thought. The consortium, clinics do write off quite a bit of care. We contribute a lot of in-kind to make sure that students are getting needs. And then at the end of the day, we do now have a couple of small pots of money, and are always seeking more funds, so that when we have kids that have fallen through every single crack, they can still get services and be paid for by those funds. But we don't have enough funds to pay for every child that's in that situation yet because we're still small. But we're continually working at that. Can you go back one? I'm sorry. Thank you. I took a pause. So that's one of the other barriers. No show appointments, that is a tough one for clinics. So when we allocate staff, if I allocate a therapist to be in a school for the whole day, and, you know, three out of the five kids that they were supposed to see aren't there, that's a bit of a hardship. So we're always looking at that from a financial sustainability standpoint. There's also a perception that we're working against still somehow, that these services are all free. And the services aren't free legally, as nonprofit and for-profit clinics, we can't actually provide free services. We have to either bill services, and then at a certain point, we can write them off. But that certainly won't be a very sustainable model to keep these clinics engaged, so that they can afford to still be part of the consortium, so we are always balancing that. So ongoing expansion of days and hours in new location, continued hiring of licensed therapists, we talked about that in the data. One of the other things that we're working on is some early steps in some communication with the state around access. So one of the barriers that we have found that really troubles us a bit, is when a student, especially a high school student, late middle school into high school, comes to us and says, I want to self-refer for therapy. They want to see a therapist. They can't get the consent to treat signed by the parent or guardian. We can't see that child. And so we're having some conversations very early about what would it look like if students at a certain age, maybe 14, could self-refer for outpatient mental health? Because legally, when they're a certain age for AODA treatment, they can self-refer. Legally, when they're a certain age, they can self-refer for reproductive health services confidentially. They can't do that for outpatient mental health services. And so we're having some conversations about what could that look like? Would that be something that would be beneficial to look at at the state level, so that some children can at least make their own referral and ask for that, that pair on their own? So there's, so the point of that is there's quite an advocacy arm to what we're doing as well. And also looking at insurance coverage gaps, and having those conversations with the state, with different payers. So we work quite a bit on that. And then continually seeking funding, you know, to cover those gaps that we're finding. Okay, I'm trying to, I'm sorry. I don't know what I did to this. All right. So really, as far as, you know, how you can help, I think the one thing that we would really ask is for feedback. You know, if there's things that you see that are going well, conference comments that you're hearing of things that are going well, those are little nuggets, those are things that we really want to make sure that we preserve and keep doing. And if there's other barriers or things that we're not, you know, aware of, please make sure that somehow that gets bubbled back to the consortium so that we can look at those, because we're always looking at process improvement. This is only our second full year into the schools. We had a half year, then last year was our first full year, and now we're into our second full year. So we're always looking for ways to improve. Do you have anything else to add before we go to questions?
I, I think the other thing that I would just underscore is the importance of what is happening in our state with insurance. One of the biggest barriers that families in general have, and this is true for the schools as well, is that insurance companies, most of our folks that we're working with have very high deductibles, and just miss that cutoff for qualifying for state programs such as Medicaid. It has gotten somewhat better. Medicaid rules have gotten better over the last several years. However, we still have quite a gap of people who are able to meet their monthly bills, but not able to afford things like the high deductibles that they have. That is something that the school consortium desires to, to continue working with. But any, any kind of consideration that the school district wants to give in terms of supporting that would certainly be appreciated in the future.
So with that, you have, what question you could raise? Or are we grossly over?
I guess the, first of all, thank you for everything you do. This is obviously a huge need, and everybody coming together to help meet that is fantastic. The, the one comment that stands out to me, or the one concept, is the fact that unless a parent signs that form, child cannot get services. So I guess my question is, what do we do as a district, or what should we do to further engage those parents who may not be inclined to sign? And I'm sure that there are some that are very legitimate reasons, but in others, I would imagine it's just frankly, a lack of belief or a lack of interest in, in doing that. How can we become better advocates for those children?
Sure. Great question. So I think I want to start for sure by recognizing the efforts of the school staff. So every school has a designated liaison that works as a liaison between parents and students, and the clinics, and the other school staff. So they spend quite a lot of time in being that go-between, and they do a heroic and terrific effort trying to get that paperwork signed, and to make sure that people have what they need. So I think that that effort is definitely there. I think that one of the things that we hear anecdotally quite a bit is, again, around that piece of the fear of confidentiality or lack thereof, where that things that are shared in that therapist's office in school might get the family into trouble, or might reveal things that they're not ready to have public, or whatever. So I think that one thing would be, you know, how do we communicate with families about the confidentiality piece? And I think the consortium saying it's, it's confidential is one thing. I think that the schools potentially hoping to reinforce that message and demonstrating that might help as well. And I think that also, you know, how we get the word out about the services, we recognize that the school staff are very, very, very busy, and they're not there to help us run a mental health clinic in their school, really. So, you know, if there are avenues that we could utilize in terms of getting more information out about the consortium, that it's available in all of the schools, those kinds of things might be very helpful as well. On the paperwork side, it's very, very hard. If a family doesn't or won't sign the paperwork, for whatever reason, we can't see that child until they're 18 and can sign their own consent to treat, so.
I think there are two things that we, as a board, could do, and they involve writing letters to Madison regarding two issues. First of all, that they change the law so that kids can self-refer at 14, and the other is to take the federal money so more people can afford insurance.
Potentially. The other thing that we're engaging in just to that end, so I think you bring up a great and valuable point, is as we work on advocacy efforts, if there was an openness that we could share those needs with the board, and see how we might have some advocacy support exactly for those things. Because the other discussion that we're starting to have with some of the insurers is, you know, if you think about your medical insurance, which covers behavioral health, your medical coverage has a preventative element. You can at least go to the doctor for sure once a year and get a checkup. But when it comes to mental health benefits, there is zero preventative element. And it's looked at always, from an insurance standpoint, as an acute condition. But a lot of folks need preventative, it's chronic, like chronic disease management. And so that's another piece of that advocacy that we're talking about, is how do we look at making sure that there is some preventative element that could be utilized four times a year, six times a year would be better than nothing, so. So if we had that support, I think that would be powerful. So more to come on that. Did that help answer your question?
Absolutely.
That magic signature? That's a, it's a tough one.
And as far as the communication and just the overall, I guess, visibility, I don't know, do things on the website, do things wherever, if, if we haven't, I think we should consider it strongly, just to raise that level of awareness, we can emphasize confidentiality and what have you, so.
Sure. And one thing that many of our clinics are doing now, and the schools have been great about inviting us, parent-teacher conferences, open houses, that the therapist will actually be there with information about their agency, about themselves, and can certainly address those things. Many of our clinics also provide what is called like a welcome letter to parents and guardians, essentially outlining that very thing, and trying to kind of keep it nuts and bolts, but addressing the piece about privacy, and, and that we are in the school, but we are not part of the school. So, and, and again, just your school counselors and social workers and principals by and large have been fabulous. We have had school counselors go to the homes of some of these families where they know that this kiddo is really needing all the paperwork signed. So, you know, I, my hope is, is over time, as these relationships solidify even more, we're going to be seeing a little bit more of that when, when there's time available. And, and we may even create another piece of that process along the line. One of the things that our area has done is connected with other school districts, with others through consortiums throughout the state and nationally. And so we're regularly getting feedback and information about how other schools are, are doing this, or how our counseling agencies are doing it.
It sounds like you're doing a lot with the counselors right now, and that's the biggest step forward, working with the district, is that they're the ones that are going to be working with students, they're going to be working with the parents, working with them is the big key. You know, you put it on websites and all of that as well, but I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're working so closely with the principals and the counselors all the way down. That's a big plus.
It is. It is. And it's a very significant piece to make this work.
I think it's important to, to note that the principals and the counselors and the school social workers have really been working with us. It's, it's a two-way street, and it's been, it's been a wonderful relationship.
Other questions that we could help answer? Did that answer all the questions that you were hoping to have as far as an update?
I think so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us, and for being such a great partner.
All right. Next item on the agenda, public and student comment. Okay, we have four individuals signed up tonight for our, for public and student comment. Just as a reminder, comments shall be limited to no more than five minutes. Speakers will be recognized by the preceding, presiding officer at the appropriate time, and will be requested to preface their comments by announcing their name, address, and group affiliation, if appropriate. Speakers shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board, and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Speakers bear the personal risk, if anything he or she says during the public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Okay, at that, at this time, I'll call the first individual signed up, and just as a reminder, Clerk Peck will hold up the timer, and that is enforced strictly. So starting with Paula Hayes, please.
My name is Paula Hayes, and I live at 157 903 East Hamilton Street. I'm a librarian at Wausau East High School, and I'm a junior gave at Wausau West, and addy a seventh grader at Horace Mann. I'm also coaching volleyball at Horace Mann this year, so if my voice cracks, they really need applause. I'll be speaking to you tonight about the single lane deferred compensation model, representing myself as an individual. I'm here to appeal to your sense of fairness and equity, and I'm an invested employee that believes in advocacy. And even though Act 10 and the actions of school boards created a teacher exodus not only in our district, but the state of Wisconsin, I still firmly believe in public education. So let me talk about the single lane salary matrix. I truly appreciate the significant shift from the four-tier model to the single lane model, and the continual reflection and changes Dr. Hiltz, Mr. Test, the WEA, and others have brought to it. The model has merit for its predictability and ease of implementation. It also rewards advanced coursework in content areas and teaching pedagogy versus the general classes the district mostly offered in the last four years. I believe master's degrees are important, for they build upon existing pedagogical knowledge, and expand a teacher's skill set in content-specific knowledge. Where the matrix still falls short, though, is in the transition period and distribution of monies. The district maintains that because some employees are finally receiving money for tier movement, master's degrees, and national board certification, the matrix then needs to be frozen for three years to cover the cost of the financial transition. An increase in pay within one group of employees should not financially penalize workers in the same group. The proposed model also falls short with the initial numbers of money distribution for new and experienced staff, as well as regular cost of living increases. Brand-new employees receive a $1,400 deferred compensation step increase, which equals about 3.26%, while more experienced employees only receive a $1,000 or a 1.27% step increase. I believe the single lane deferred compensation scale should be effectively distributed, so that all employees in the teacher group are receiving the same percent increase. The step money should actually increase over time for royal district service, not decrease. The dollar amount should not be static. The compensation is actually discriminatory to your most experienced teachers in this district. As you know, inflation causes, causes cost of living expenses to regularly increase for individuals and their families. As the price of everyday items such as food, housing, gas, and clothing and utilities rises, teachers or employees end up spending more each year. The main reason to give a cost of living raise is to keep employee wages reasonable compared to living expenses. For me, this has failed to happen not only in the last nine years, but the majority of my career. Each year I taught, the gap between my Wausau School District earnings and my ability to purchase actual goods widened. This gap was magnified by the wage freeze in 2010, 11, and 12. It continued to widen even more when I was stuck at the bottom of Tier 3, and then was refused music, or movement by the district into Tier 4 for two years, even though I met the requirements to do so. I was effectively frozen, or as the district refers to it, at a barrier. Let me put those barriers into perspective for you. My net take-home pay in 2011 was $5,751 less than I took home in 2010. In fact, my net take-home pay was less in 2012, 14, 15, 16, 17, than 2010. Six of the last nine years, my net pay was less than 2010, for a grand total of over $23,000. My trends in lost income are not alone. I believe my statistics are mirrored by many experienced salaries, or teacher salaries throughout the district. Now in this proposal, the district wants me to yet take another three-year freeze? Many staff members, about 38%, have already taken a pay freeze the last three years due to barriers within the existing compensation model. They are unable to meet the stringent requirements of 50 hours of professional development time outside of the school day to prioritize family or coaching requirements, or being at a wall within the pay scale, unable to move to the next tier or level of compensation. Because of time, I'm going to skip forward. We need to work together to collaborate and refine the existing proposal, and I believe the salary schedule could be one of the most attractive in the state, and we can actively recruit for you. and we can actively recruit for you, but what refinements are needed? There needs to be an equitable distribution of monies across the salary schedule. Tenured employees need to be rewarded for their loyalty, not penalizing their advanced years of service. Two, regular cost of living wages are needed to increase deferred compensation. Three, continue financial rewards for advanced education. And then finally, you need to decrease the number of deferred compensation steps from 32. Thank you for your time.
Next is Deb Kirsch.
Hi, I'm Deb Kirsch, 7402 Redbud Road, Wassa, Wisconsin. A little bit of my history, I'm a third grade teacher at South Mountain, and this is my 22nd year in the district. My current salary when put on the new model is the same as someone who's been in the district for about 11 years. Early in my career, I chose not to go for my master's degree. I wanted the time with my young sons far more than a raise that the masters would bring. As they got older, I felt I could dedicate time to improve myself, further my education, and increase my salary. The new comp model made this possible. All staff was told of the opportunity to earn $70,000 if we reached Tier Four. For me, it was a lofty goal, move up two tiers, complete nine academies, earn over 270 credits. This summer, I completed my part of the process. I finished over 270-plus hours of work, nine academies, and nine capstones. Now I'm just waiting, because I need to wait three years to jump from one tier to the next. However, as I wait, I watch my new salary shrink. The $70,000 I was originally promised is now $5,000 less when I finally get there. I don't understand how suddenly my accomplishment is worth so much less than it was a couple of years ago. Makes me feel like all my hard work is no longer valued the way it was for others. Looking at the new model, a person with my amount of years of experience in the district, 22 years, is said to be receiving $70,000. However, when I transition to the new model, that's not where I'll be placed. I know this is a huge undertaking, trying to streamline this new pay scale. I know that you're never going to please everyone, but I really hope you'll be considerate of those of us who pursued the higher learning you promoted and worked to provide us with the original fiscal incentives that were promised to us. I would love to chat with any of you to give input and work towards reasonable solutions. Again, my name is Deb Kirsch.
Thank you. John Mossens.
President Zuckler, I respectfully request if possible that Jody and I switch. Jody is next.
Okay, that's fine. No problem. All right, Jody Krieg.
Hi there, I'm Jody Krieg, I live at 729 South Fifth Ave. This is my 28th year educating and serving the Wassa School District. I'm here tonight to speak toward the single-tier model presented to the board and to the WEA by Dr. Hiltz, specifically as it relates to veteran teachers. The last 14 going on 15 years have held leadership changes and transition in the district. Leadership coupled with Act 10 and the implementation of the alt-comp model have created a tough working environment on some levels. We have seen colleagues go to neighboring and other districts. We have had excellent teachers retire before they had planned due to the stress of working in the district. The turnover in teachers speaks for itself. Throughout this time, there have been veteran teachers who have stayed the course. We were hired at a kinder and a gentler time and fully invested in the district. We are loyal employees, we are professionals, we hold PhDs, national board certifications, and master's degrees. We serve as mentors, are your role models, your department chairs and team leaders. We participate in committees and are the go-to people in our buildings. We have grit, perseverance, and have been a steady foundation that has kept our buildings and our district solid. Colleagues hired when I was hired have seen few CPI raises during their entire careers. We worked under the QEO prior to Act 10. Since Act 10, your veteran teachers have received CPI once. In the last adjustment to the alt-comp model two years ago, Tier One teachers received a 7% increase. Tiers Two, Three, and Four did not receive CPI. As you know, the alt-comp model has not been a friend to the teachers of the district. Working collaboratively, hopefully we can clean up the mess, tend to some of the wounds, and move forward. The single-tier model is a step in the right direction. It appears to be much more manageable and navigable than our current salary schedule. It acknowledges a work-home balance. I believe the intent is to give teachers more choice in their professional growth. There are some areas of concern. One is the lack of equity in the proposed increments of a raise. Once again, the increments at the bottom for less experienced teachers, both in years of service and in education, are awarded more than the veteran teachers. The second is the suggested freeze of three years once this model is established. The third is ensuring proper placement of staff in the new model. There are teachers who were denied access to the tier model because they earn graduate credits or a master's degree between the two models. We need to do right by these people and award them for the work and professional development that they have accomplished. As a veteran teacher, I am asking you for your support. Please recognize that there are 150 to 200 teachers who have been stuck on a wall at Tiers Two and Three, who have received little increase in their take-home pay and certainly not CPI. I believe that there are 87 of us at the wall in Tier Three. The design of raises in the Tier One model slight this group again. The raises in the Tier One model need to be equitable. While they are not, one group is on the losing end. This creates imbalance and picks groups of people against one another. In any model, this is counterintuitive to building a culture of success. I am asking you, the board, to ask hard questions with regard to the budget and to do your research. Your employees are your most valuable asset. They are the faces in the classroom that make learning happen. They are parents and homeowners and people with student loans trying to make a living like anyone else. Please show them that they are valued. Money is finite, yes, that means we need to prioritize. Lastly, I firmly believe this district needs to right some wrongs with regard to placement on the alt-comp model. Regardless of the timeframe in which an employee earned a master's degree or graduate credits, higher education must be recognized. In whatever compensation we have at the time, we are a school district. Teaching and learning are our priority. We strive to educate all children, the whole child, and to prepare them to be successful. Just as we celebrate our students' graduations and movement toward higher education, we must do the same with our own. Individuals who were in programs when the alt-comp model was in planning and not granted credit in the tiers for their work need to be placed with care in the one-tier model. I would like to retire from the kinder, gentler district that hired me 28 years ago. We need to do right by our teachers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And finally, John Mossens.
Good evening, I'm John Mossens, 803 Student Street. As you know, I teach at Wassa West. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my fellow professionals, Jody and Deb and Paula for speaking tonight, and I applaud you for your efforts. I know that you like to hear from us in regards to the new model and what we think of it. I'm going to reiterate and probably drive home the points that my colleagues have done as well. First of all, doing away with current four-tier model is, and going to the single-tier model restores a work-life balance that we as educators in the Wassa School District have been so concerned with since the inception of the four-tier model. We initially saw that there was going to be problems with people losing time at home and having to give up precious hours working till eight and nine o'clock at night. And this, for once in all, does away with that and allows people to go home when they choose to go home and not have to play the academy game if they so choose not to and not have to chase their tail and work towards those things if they choose. A single-tier model, as it's being presented, is understandable and attainable. I can't tell you the number of times that people have come to us and said, can you please, once again, explain to us the four-tier system and how it works? Even though people are explaining it at the initial hiring process, you know, it has just been a logistical nightmare for people to understand, as you all know. The new starting salary and the top-end salary put the Wassa School District in line with comparable districts, and that is very much positive. And finally, Dr. Hiltz has worked very hard with the WEA Executive Committee to listen to our concerns regarding the new model and has taken them into consideration. That's been very much appreciated. Now, for our concerns, and I hope you have heard that they are concerns, they are not negatives, first and foremost, we believe that the yearly increments need to be of the same monetary value. We believe that everybody moving down the system should receive the same amount of money. The veteran teachers are the professionals who have sustained the high quality of education, educational opportunities our community expects. They have coached teams, they have advised clubs, they have mentored new teachers, they have led committees, they have chaperoned events. They have made those choices that you heard about. Well, people have to make choices. They made those choices to do those things and probably gave up the 50-point game that was waiting for them. And by doing that, they couldn't, they didn't move down and through the model. These educators deserve to be duly compensated at the same yearly increase rate as our early career educators as well. These are your lifelong Wassa career educators. The three-year freeze is concerning regarding future earnings. To freeze the model will only continue to put Wassa educators behind the economic eight ball further, and that's a concern. Finally, let me state the following. The board has known about the problems of the four-tier model from its inception. The sustainability and equity of it has always been called into question. Now, as my beloved grandmother Seal used to say, the chickens have come to roost. It's time for the board to realize that the WSD must make things right, take care of the anxiety, take care of the heartburn, take care of the lost family time, take care of the wasted seat time, take care of the lost wages of the last five years that the four-year model has created. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. All right, next we're on item nine of the regular board meeting agenda, and this is to approve the consent agenda.
And I would like to pull out the new hires, and I would like to make a motion that we go into an executive session to further discuss the new hires after the regular meeting business has been taken care of.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to remove the new hires for discussion in executive session after the conclusion of this agenda.
I second that motion.
Okay. Is that a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Pat McKee?
No.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
No.
Trisha Zunker?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
No.
Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Okay, so then we will go into executive session at the conclusion and then convene it open to conclude the meeting pending that executive session. So I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda except for the new hires.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay, motion carries. I would like to say with great gratitude to the donations to the district, and those donations include Courtright Auto Glass, anonymous donor, Walmart, Paul and Jenna Lorenston, Jean and Marilyn Larg, QuickTrip, Marathon County Medical Society, Ryan and Shannon Lozen, UMR, Buffalo Wild Wings, Central Wisconsin Wolf Pack, and Research Fields. Thank you to each of those donors. Okay, moving on to old and recurring business. The first item is a resolution concerning impasse and negotiations for the 2019-20 collective bargaining agreement with the WEA.
I can speak to that. So the district and the WEA had sat down for two negotiation sessions, and we appeared to be at impasse. So I met two more times with members of the WEA Executive Committee, and it does indeed appear that, you know, the district has made their final offer and the WEA is not accepting that offer. So at this time, I would ask that the board approve that we go to impasse and impose our final, the district's final offer.
Is there actually language of this resolution?
Yes, it is.
Page 65? Oh, okay.
Excuse me for a second. Attorney Resh suggested that if there is a motion that we voted on, that be read aloud, the resolution.
Thank you. Bob, I'm sorry, was there anything else that we should be, okay, thank you.
We may want to do a roll call vote for something like this. Okay. So, do you have it accessible?
Let's see, I believe, yes.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
All right, so perhaps we should read it and then any discussion? All right, so the language of the resolution, this is the resolution of the school board of the Wassa School District dated September 9, 2019. Whereas representatives of the Wassa School District School Board, here and after board, and the Wassa Education Association, here and after association, have been engaged in negotiations for the 2019-20 collective bargaining agreement between the parties. And whereas the association has not accepted the board's last base wage offer for the 2019-20 school year, and whereas neither party has a change of its last position, and therefore, the board believes that the board and association are at an impasse, and therefore, be it resolved by the school board of the Wassa School District that, number one, the board declares that the parties are at an impasse in negotiations over the 2019-20 collective bargaining agreement between the board and the association. Two, that the board's last offer increasing the base wage by an average of 1.756% was caused by the administration be implemented as soon as practicable. And three, that this offer be incorporated in the 2019-20 collective bargaining agreement along with its duration. Is there anything either Bob or Keith would like to add?
No.
Board members?
No, we thoroughly discussed this, so.
Okay, all right, well, then I am seeking a motion to approve the resolution concerning impasse and negotiations for the 2019-20 collective bargaining agreement with the WEA as presented, and this will be a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So that motion has been approved by roll call vote, and we are moving on to the legal expense summary for 2018. What, this should be, yeah, this is for 2018.
Nothing has changed since the ops meeting, so.
Okay.
And no action has been proposed.
Okay, so there's nothing to that then, correct? Were there questions? They were going to stay out.
Yeah, they said they don't care.
Okay. Any questions on the legal expense summary? All right, we went through this in Ed Ops committee meeting. Okay, now we're moving on to the single lane teacher compensation model.
Well, Mr. Test is saying, I'm going to shift over here. So first, just want to speak a little bit, just remind people of the why of the comp model. We certainly heard from our staff, our teachers, about the number of concerns and the goals for the changes really are, you know, to create a compensation model that will effectively attract and retain teachers. That's really its only goal. There are other some, there are other parameters there. There are other some, there are other parameters there. Affordability, simplicity, predictability. Mr. Tess and I have had a number of conversations about how to best accomplish those goals. We also have a goal that really hasn't been expressed, although I think it's understood. And that is, you know, five, 10, and 15 years from now, we don't want to create something that someone else then has to fix in terms of affordability, sustainability. So that is constantly on our minds. I would, before, I'm going to have Mr. Tess present the, some of the changes and the model at its current state. I do want to thank Bob for hours and hours and hours of work and analysis and preparation. I want to thank the Board too for giving us your feedback and making sure we understand, you know, what it is that you want, you know, from this model and for your employees. And I do want to thank the WEA representatives as well and other teachers who have helped to shape this proposal. It, as I said from the beginning, there is no perfect compensation model. So I think with that, let me turn it over to Bob for presentation and then I will summarize it in the end and take your feedback. So thank you.
Thanks. The format we're going to follow, obviously the front page is different. It's kind of Plan B, and I don't know how many more plans we're going to have, but we keep improving the model. And improvements oftentimes cost a little bit more money. And improvements aren't always improvements for everyone, especially if the affordability measure stays the same. And we reposition dollars on the compensation model. They're likely to cut away from other places and be repositioned. This model, Plan B, does add additional money. Okay, so it's not as affordable as the last model we saw on 826. So the format is going to look a lot the same, and the slides are in the same place. It's easy to follow. Nothing has changed on this slide. I don't know if you want to reference any of that from this slide. Same reason why we're thinking about making the change. This slide is quite a bit different. This slide shows on the left the schematic of the old model. When I say old, the one that we presented two weeks ago tonight. 826 is what you see on the left. And parts of it drew some criticism. The 650s down at the end drew some criticism. Maybe the 135 steps to get to the top drew some criticism. There are some other things. So that's what we started to tweak. So all the changes were from 826 to what you see on the right side. And I'll go through some of what I thought were the noteworthy changes. Probably, there are too many to mention. You can compare. The starting salary instead of $42,000 is $43,000. And much of that was in recognition of if the salary schedule is going to, indeed, the new one remain fixed for three years, we want to have a competitive salaries to start with. So $43,000 versus $42,000. The $1,400 increases last longer. The 14s went to 13s, and now the 14s last a little bit longer. But the $1,400 increases skip right past 1350 and go right to 1,300. And you can see the 1,300s do last right up until that bar. Additional opportunity for T27, 2800. People that are at the bottom of blue. In most cases, the people that have maxed out their earnings without a master's degree, the bottom of blue under the previous model is in most cases, many cases, the most you can earn without a master's degree. We've replaced master's degree with highly qualified teacher academies as well. So in some cases, Ms. Kirsch is an example of that. Could get beyond that and get into purple, but the increase that that same teacher was allowed on the old model, they were at that bar already. Without a master's degree, they were stuck. Under the new model, they were allowed one more increase. So the master, the without a master's degree teacher at the bottom of blue was allowed one more increase. Lower increases after the bold line. After the bold line, they were 1,300. Now they're 1,000, but the thousands last longer. This is an exercise we went through countless times in the last two weeks. If we give this, we've got to take this. If we spend more here, we have to spend less somewhere. If we adjust this, we need to adjust that. So the 1,000s do last longer. They continue all the way to the top. Reach the top a little bit sooner. Goes up to 100, or step 135 two weeks ago, goes up to step 132 now. So you could conceivably get from the bottom to the top in 29 years. If somewhere in there you earned a master's degree and somewhere in there you earned a National Board and you started at step one for 101, which isn't necessarily the case either. You may start on the slightly lower top salary. That's just a function of how the numbers worked out. Instead of $80,150, it stops at an even $80,000. So those were the changes. And there were some more slides. All the examples changed. And some of the other specifics of the model and some of the other slides. We can go back to this one. It would be a good slide to reference while we're asking and answering questions perhaps. Nothing changed on this slide. Nothing changed. The proposal in Plan B is to still keep the model fixed for three years, keep the old model fixed forever, allow a five-year transition before we completely transition to the new model. And again, I feel pretty strongly about current dollar amounts that the Board has been allocating for new money for teacher raises. If we do the model as proposed under Plan B, would not allow for much, if anything, to be applied to the percent. And if we apply, my word, not yours, not any, a minuscule percent to the new model, and the cost comes, keeps screwing up people's strategies in migrating to the new model, you could change the new model by $5 or $10 and really mess with somebody's strategy because they're shooting at a moving target. We went over that a little bit two weeks ago. People are going to be trying to target when the best time to move will be over the next three years or the next five years. And if we allow that new model to change, even if we allow it to change a little bit, which it probably will be relative to how much it's costing for the transition and the new model movement alone. Allow it to change a little bit, it could really mess up people's strategies. Again, they could go from being just above the next threshold to being just below it. And instead of staring at a $1,200 increase, it would be a $4 increase. And that could happen by just changing that model by a little bit. I think the cost benefit in changing that model by a little bit versus messing with people's strategies, I would tend towards keeping it static and not messing with their strategy. Which is something that if we wanted to change, if you wanted to take any residual dollars and put it on the new grid, I think we could do that. But then our ability to educate people on when the best time to move would be goes out the window. We would say it's the Wild West and make the best guess you can and see if you can hit it right. So if you wanted us to do that, I think we could with any residual dollar.
We're also always at the mercy of what happens in Madison and DC. Think it over, you'll mention it too.
Yeah, especially beyond two years out. You're right. Every two years, you get a pretty good idea of what's happening. And then the next two years, you're kind of guessing. Or if you wanted to go by gubernatorial elections, sometimes every four years, you kind of know what's going on, but you're right. We can go back to this slide also really easily, I think. This is the slide you saw two weeks ago. And on that slide, I superimpose that million-dollar threshold. A million dollars is about what we afforded in new dollars through teacher increases this year. The one that you just voted to go to impasse on, that's about a million dollars, 2.5%. So you can see, under what was proposed two weeks ago tonight, we reached that million-dollar threshold a couple of different times. And it's broken down by the gold, I guess, is the partial cost of the old model. And it gets smaller and smaller and smaller as fewer people are on the old model. The blue is the transition. The biggest transition year is the first year because we believe a lot of people are going to transition to the new model. And then the green is the full cost or the partial cost, eventually full cost of just movement on the new model. So if you look all the way to the right, it's about $875,000. And there's no gold and there's no blue. That's movement on the new model, $875,000. You can see it, it's hiding underneath and peeking out a little bit. That's what has changed in the last two weeks. Plan B is the underneath, and then of course, the one million-dollar threshold as well. Notice the far right, the green. That stayed about the same. The seventh year, eighth year, ninth year transition or increases, not total cost of the teacher as an aggregate. The increases are still about $875,000. That did not go up under Plan B. The transitions cost a little bit more. Now, this may be easy to understand, maybe it's difficult to understand. But if we hit a Plan A and we kept everything the same, except instead of giving a $2,000 increase, we gave a $25,000 increase. Keep in mind, the seventh year would be the same under both of them, right? Because it's the increase that you take on early on. The incremental change in the seventh, eighth, ninth year would be exactly the same for both of those. It's hard to grasp. So it doesn't come as much of a surprise that that green ends up being about the same. Those are increases, not total dollars spent. Here's some statistics you might be interested in. The 826 Board of Education meeting is on the left. Tonight is Plan B on the right. The top one will not change because it references the last five years. The last five years, including the percent put on the matrix itself, averaged 2.25%. So new money applied to the teacher model was 2.25%, including the percentage. The five-year transition average two weeks ago was 2.51. This one's a little bit more expensive, it's 2.58%. A little bit over $9,000. The seventh year was 2.25, and it's still 2.25. That's what I was talking about a little while ago, that last green level. So it costs over seven years, $416,000 to make the improvements that we made from two weeks ago till tonight. Here's some data you have seen before. Here are the Wassa School District master's degree teachers pulled out as pink dots. Here's the proposal on transitions from two weeks ago. Master's degree teachers in that band earning less than $50,000 would get placed onto the new model and move forward three rungs. Master's degree teachers between 50 and 55,000 would be placed onto the new model and move forward two rungs. Master's degree teachers between 55 and 60,000 move to the new model and then move forward one rung. We noticed we were maybe missing some teachers that were below the line of best fit. And we tried to recapture some of those teachers below the line of best fit. So in Plan B, one more change that will not show up in the model because it's a transition item. Still below $50,000, move forward three. This band was widened. It was from 50 to 55,000, now it's from 55 to 57,500. If you're between 50,000 and 57,500 and you have a master's degree, placement on the new model to the next highest number, plus move forward two rungs. And the next band is still $7,500. So now we felt we captured some of those teachers that were living below that line of best fit. Dr. Hiltz, I don't know if you want to say something about this one because the next one comes up later in the slide.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
So together, all of those make up the Plan B. The ones that I mentioned earlier, and then this changed to the transition plan. So the transition plan, under $50,000, there is the band. It's kind of jagged, but that's a band. Placement, move forward three. The next one between 50 and 57, placement, move forward two. The next one, placement, move forward one, above $65,000 placement. That's all based on data that we're seeing here.
Well, I have a question, if I may ask right now. I like the idea of your giving credit to master's degrees. I like the idea that we're encouraging continuation of education. You get a master's or you get a national certification, you now go below that line and continue in that process. If a person gets a master's and then goes on for national certification, is there motivation to continue to give them more for what they have done? Or once they get past that master's and they decide to go on for an EDS and then possibly a national certification? Do we give anything for motivation to continue to do that? Or do we encourage people to stop after only a master's?
You can get masters and National Board both. They'll both be rewarded.
Correct.
So I'm missing what you're saying, the EDS?
If you get the, if you get the national certification, you got it. Is there motivation to continue on to get the master's degree? Or if they get a master's degree and they go down the line, are they motivated by us with monetary incentive to go on for a national certification? And then to continue their education?
Yes, in both cases.
Maybe, did I miss it?
No matter which order they do it first. Wherever they encounter a master's degree, move forward instead of one, which would be typical, move forward three. If later on, National Board is earned, instead of moving one, move two. If it was flipped around, if they earn their National Board first, wherever they are, move forward two, erase the old line. Later on, masters would move them forward three. I think that captures the answer?
Are you talking about doctor level work or second masters? I'm talking about the continuation. Are we doing anything for motivation?
We haven't. We haven't built anything into this model.
I'm just asking, are we thinking about that down the line? Because even with the old step and lane, there was motivation to continue on after a master's degree and continue possibly to a doctorate. Now you have the EDSs moving on in between the masters and the doctorate. You know, is there that motivation to do that? And I just throw it out because it's another aspect.
Not financially, you know, it's not financially...
Encouraged, right? I don't mean to throw a curveball, I'm just asking the question if we're...
Don't worry about curveballs.
Yeah.
And some of them, we turn into...
Well, this could be a rise to playing softball.
Yeah. And that's how this model has gotten to the point. And it's improved upon every time we show it to you, I think. And it gets that way by people throwing sliders and curveballs and fastballs and everything. Right, so, keep throwing them. Slightly higher starting salary gives the people that are already on the model somewhere to move to onto the new model instead of saying, "New model offers nothing for me." The increase without any PD on the old model, in most cases, was $567. Now the average differs throughout. You saw the numbers on the last few slides ago. It's 14 and then it's 13 and then it's 1,000, but the average is 1,194. You know, 1,194 dollar increase until, of course, on average, without any professional development or any higher ed. Top salary, two weeks ago, that was $2,000 more than what it currently is. Now it's $1,900 more. There's an additional growth opportunity. There was two weeks ago, but there's a better growth opportunity for the T33, 3800s. The people that are at the bottom of purple, we're given growth opportunity two weeks ago, but that growth opportunity is better. Perhaps not as, not as big of an increase as everybody wants, but it comes with a cost. Here are some examples. And these are, I tried to capture the same examples that you saw two weeks ago, but the numbers are updated. So really, there's not a lot new to see with the examples. Here's a teacher without a master's, just a bachelor's degree, pure placement. They start at 48,355, they go to the next highest salary, 48,600. That's a placement raise of $245, and we kept the same incentive. People that perhaps got maybe a not-so-lucky draw, because it is kind of arbitrary where they ended up because it goes to the next highest one. If they got a small placement raise, we made up for it with the one-time incentive or a one-time stipend. And that one-time stipend was the difference between the 245 and the 500, which is 255, and doubled. That didn't change from last week or two weeks ago. This one is just another example of that same teacher. If they had a master's degree placed onto the... If they had a Masters Degree, placed onto the new model, forty-eight, six, then move forward three, in a recognition that the current teacher compensation model did not yet recognize them for that Masters. It was going to when they moved into a new tier, but it didn't get to that point. We heard from people that said that tonight. They were in a waiting game and this takes away that weight. Immediately, move forward three. Here's a Bachelor Degree person at fifty-one, eight seventy-seven. They do get a higher placement raise, nine hundred twenty-three dollars, so there's no one-time incentive for them. They get a placement raise the rest of their career, nine hundred twenty-three dollars every year. Here's that same teacher with a Masters Degree. And that was also data-driven, the graph that we saw before with the scatter plot on the line of best fit. We recognized that there were certain salary bands where we were behind in paying Masters Degree teachers. Here's another example of the veteran teacher at the bottom of purple. I believe that dollar amount is exactly the same. There happened to be a seventy-three thousand dollar on the old model two weeks ago, there's a seventy-three thousand dollar on the new model, placement raise of one eleven, one-ten incentive of seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. Here's a starting teacher at forty-one, zero nine eight, would go to forty-three because that's the next highest salary. Here's that person at the bottom of blue that I referenced before. Highest salary, not necessarily with a Masters Degree. Two weeks ago, they're immediately up against the bold line. Now they have one more cell growth opportunity on the new ladder. Dr. Hiltz, I'll let you take over from here. I think you know what's coming next?
Well, yeah, I hope. I don't know, I haven't seen it yet.
You saw it in the theory.
So, thank you Bob. So as I mentioned at the beginning, you know, we have some goals. And I guess I'm going to summarize by saying, you know, we've heard the concerns about the current model, right? The time it takes, the inability for someone to move on the model and, you know, and we, when we look at this data, we see, we see the concerns are really shown here. So you can see that, you know, we are trying to create a model that addresses those concerns and will kind of redraw the data, if you will, the face of the compensation situation in the Wausau School District. So again, as we look at the data, this seemed to be a more logical, and I know I'm blocking the camera, I'll come over here. This seemed to be a more logical breakpoint, so that's why we brought this up to sixty-five thousand. Up here, I mentioned this last time, I just want to reiterate that a line of best fit isn't always best fit because of course, when a salary schedule tops out, of course, all of, you know, this is as far as these can go. And so the line really should curve, but we really wanted to, you know, enhance this area up here as well. So I think if I hit this, okay, all right. So I was talking to Mr. Tess a little bit earlier and so this is, I don't think in your packet unless we re-uploaded.
It'll be tomorrow, it's in the packet and I didn't want to alarm Cassie.
Yeah.
I thought it was a message saying change or something, but...
So what I, I wanted to, again, if this model were in place and everybody started at year one, right? And at year six, five, they got a Masters Degree, they would bump up to here. If they continued, you know, in the profession and at year sixteen or so, got a National Board, there'd be another little bump there. And you can see, this is the actual slope of the growth that we're talking about in that thousand range. And then of course, we max out at eighty thousand. And I like the visual because it shows what I think it is we want to accomplish. And that is a steeper growth than the line of best fit, than the average in our comparable districts, right? And I understand, you know, the concern of our veteran teachers with a thousand dollars versus a fourteen hundred. I understand it. We did, by the way, cost out, if we made it flat off the way through, it would add another million over the next five years in addition to the four hundred thousand. So that'd be one point five million more in the transition. And again, that's, I don't know what that percentage would be, but again, in terms of affordability, again, we don't want five and ten years down the road, someone else have to fix, you know, a mistake that I made. So again, just, I thought that was a good visual. Thank you Bob for putting that together.
There's one more slide.
Is there one more?
It just shows everybody and not Bachelors, it's all teachers.
One more here? There we go, all right. So that's everybody, all the teachers current, okay, good, all right. And I think we end with this, and I do want to, I had shared this before, no perfect compensation model. The drawbacks are the same as they were last year, except for this one. And that is, again, if we, as we raise the starting salary to forty-three, to maintain a competitive starting salary, if we freeze for three years, that's really the goal here, we will take all of our teachers who are making less than forty-three and consolidate them into the same box. That will create some angst among some four, five, six-year teachers who've been with us for that long and they're now getting paid the same as starting. And that's, when you, when everybody's here and you raise everybody up, that's just what happens. So again, not ideal, but again, if we want to keep the starting salary higher, that's what happens. So I think this is the last slide, isn't it?
It repeats the counter.
Okay, and then there's the... So why don't I stop talking and see what you think?
Bob, do you know how many people you kind of expect to move from old model to new model percentage-wise in the first year? What's your best guess?
Well, they're all baked into those numbers, first of all, so I had to make a best guess. That transition cost takes the full cost if everybody transitions in one year, which is over a million dollars now, if everybody transitioned in one year and it takes a percentage of it. And that percentage right now for the first year of the new model would be about sixty percent transitioning.
Wow, that seems sort of low to me, but maybe I'm off. I just wonder if you talked at all about shortening that transition period? I feel sometimes like we want to respect people who are at a certain place on the old model and I get that, but I was wondering if you could shorten that transition period by saying, "We're going to respect points that have been earned, but we're not going to accrue new points." Do you know what I'm saying? It's like, you're respecting what you've done to this point, but we're not respecting what you think you might do in the future and lengthening this transition period to five years. Could we then squeeze that down to three? Because keeping, I feel like we're sort of prioritizing the people who are choosing to stay on the old model over the people who are moving to the new model, which is what we really want people to do. Am I wrong in that?
No, I wouldn't say you're wrong. If you don't mind me starting your response, Bob, then you can certainly chime in. You know, I'm listening to the comments, you know, today and earlier, you know, I heard Mr. Matsons talk about making things right. You know, I talk about, I hear people talk about, you know, kind of honoring the promise that was made and that's really what we're trying to accomplish here. And I don't know how we do that in a shorter timeframe. So if I'm understanding you, Beth, so let's say someone earned X number of points and they had to wait a few, and they were supposed to wait a few years to transition to another tier, right? Are you suggesting that we would, that they would not have that opportunity?
If they've already earned the points?
Right.
They would have that opportunity, but you wouldn't open it up if you're staying on the old model, just because you're waiting to transition, that's one thing. But in order to earn additional old points on the new, old model, when we've moved as a district to a new model, doesn't seem fair to me.
So if they've earned the points?
You respect that.
We would, you would say move them?
No, not necessarily. Or wait on the old model until you want to move.
Okay. So if someone had earned, if needed fifty, a hundred, two hundred more points, they would not have that opportunity to earn those and therefore couldn't move to the salary you, you know, that we had told them they could earlier?
Well, we've transitioned to a new model.
Yes, okay.
Are you talking about compensating them for the points that they have now, but not allowing them to earn more points? So we'd have to find a place for them on that, on the new model, taking into consideration the points they already have.
Or allow them to stay on the old and wait it out and then transition over.
But if we're allowing people to stay on the model just to wait it out, why wouldn't we allow people that had planned to continue to earn points during that same amount of time do that? If we're saying, "Hey, you've earned points, but you have to stay on the model, we're not just going to move you," then that time is still running. I mean, we had this conversation last time and the problem is, is that we're not, not everybody's going to be pleased. That is the problem. But I do feel like we are pulling the rug out from teachers that had anticipated they were going to make these steps in the next year or two or three.
Yeah. Could I speak a little bit more to that transition period? I know that's a tough thing to say. Two things I want to say about it. One, when we say freeze, and let me back up. You know that, ah, I'm going too far back.
You're just freezing the amounts, but you're not freezing the person.
Correct. So people can still progress. So if it's fourteen hundred, thirteen, a thousand, whatever, they can still move, right? We get that?
Right.
Secondly, looking at the graphic here, and I don't know if everybody can see this, this little wedge of orange behind the blue and then the yellow, this is obviously Plan B. When we look at the cost of transition under the current proposal, it's well over a million, one point oh-five, one point one. Frankly, there really isn't money to put on this model anyway. We're already well above the percentage that the district has been adding previously. So I would say, whether we say we're going to or not, really, we can't. We're kind of maxing out the dollars moving forward. And this might not be a bad time to mention, not to complicate the situation, but just to try and comprehend the complexity of it. I know that you all value every employee we have in the district. Everybody is really critical to our success. If we're saying that over the next three to five years, that the average teacher salary increase would be two point five percent, two point five-eight, I'm thinking that we would want to offer that same recognition to our other employee groups, which is another, you know, twenty million dollars worth of salaries. So that's not incorporated into this, it's strictly teachers. So we're just in a, we're in a very generous financial situation as we offer this.
So Kate, I have a question about the move with the raises and I'm glad to see that that six fifty on the higher end was changed, but I am still concerned about this. I just don't think it's very good for teacher morale overall. I mean, was it discussed, a thousand dollars each step? I mean, just everybody across the board?
We could do a thousand.
I'm just putting a number out there. I'm not, obviously, I'm not sponsoring them, but I'm just saying...
Noel got happy, sorry. No, that would be, we can. We can do whatever the board wants, right?
Well, because typically, it would be, you're rewarded for your years of service, so we're kind of doing it in reverse, it seems to me, you know, the fourteen hundreds in the earlier years. And I understand some of the reasoning with that, but I do feel like it could create unhappy feelings and maybe we just say, "Hey, it doesn't matter what year you're in or what step on the ladder you will, but when you do move, it's always the same amount."
We, just maybe, we could create that model real easily. In fact, I've created costing scenarios that are nimble enough to just swap out all the different numbers and put in one number. And you say a thousand, I'll even up to eleven hundred, let's say. We could probably make this real easily, eleven hundred, eleven hundred raises all the way up to stop right around eighty thousand. Wouldn't be eighty right on the head necessarily, but it'd be close. Then we start to have a different discussion. We have a discussion about DC Everest teachers, just to choose a local district. Not that we always compare ourselves to DC Everest, but they're hiring new teachers that start around the same and they go up twelve hundred, twelve hundred, twenty-six hundred, twelve hundred, twelve hundred, three thousand, twelve hundred, twelve hundred. And theirs do flatten out at the end, but they have a steeper curve at the beginning and flatter at the end. Our model that we're under currently is steeper at the beginning and flatter at the end. The old step and lane model was steeper at the beginning and flatter at the end. And all of them recognize that this is a profession we want to draw people to and keep them in, especially when you see statistics that say fifty percent of teachers don't last five years. And how are you going to keep them in the profession? And furthermore, how are we going to keep them in Wausau? And that's what led to the fourteen hundred, six fifty. And we were convinced that maybe fourteen hundred, six fifty isn't the answer, maybe it's fourteen, thirteen, one thousand. And if you as a board want it to be eleven hundred across the board, it's certainly going to be easy to build and it's going to somewhat make the people at the top happier by a hundred dollars. I mean, maybe that's not even the right answer, maybe it's got to be more than eleven hundred. What's it going to do to attracting and retaining new teachers into the profession and into the Wausau School District? So that's the discussion that usually ends up happening when we flatten it out. Right now, if you look at the slope, it's, you can't even tell the difference, you really can't. You can't. You see fourteen hundreds at the beginning, it doesn't look like it's any steeper than at the end. Of course, after eighty, it flattens out, you can see that. But that slope is pretty much the same throughout and we can make it exactly the same throughout by making it, the number I throw out is eleven hundred, I don't know if that's the answer, but we can make it eleven hundred all the way and it would cost about the same, right? And it'd be, it'd look almost the same, really it would. You can't tell the fourteen hundreds from the eleven hundreds.
But when we give the money at the beginning of someone's career, that means they earn more over the lifetime of their career, because they have that extra money all those years.
You're right. If you talk career earnings, you're right, career earnings for, starting at forty-three, going to have one thousand or eleven, 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 eleven versus fourteen, 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 and then a bunch of fives, I'll take the fourteen, 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 because you're right. But what we're dealing with and what becomes the challenge, we're transitioning veteran teachers to the new schedule and they don't care what hap, I don't want to say that, that's not right either. They do care, but they don't have a financial interest in what happens at the beginning. They're interested in what happens from here to the rest of my career. So that argument really...
But if it's always been basically this steeper at the beginning?
Yes.
Bob, two quick questions. The three-year wait, if we look at that example that Ms. Kirsch talked about, can you remind me, is that imposed because of this other three-year freeze or is that a function of the old model and the imposed waiting period?
No, I shared Ms. Kirsch, because I only shared what she already shared, so I don't have to talk too much about her situation.
No, 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 I don't.
There are many teachers who are on the current grid and they're waiting. And they're waiting because they already have the five academies or they already have the Masters Degree or maybe already have the second Masters Degree and now they're just waiting to get their big move. And their big move is usually a tier movement. Now, maybe you remember the old model, from blue to purple, isn't a huge financial incentive because it's almost just a sideways move. The big incentive is when you're waiting, waiting and waiting, you go from purple to yellow. Okay, the purple to yellow is the big incentive, because now you can get a three, four, five thousand dollar jump. So there are a few, there are quite a few teachers that are just waiting now. They fulfill their obligation or what worries me about Ms. Martin's suggestion or proposal, whatever you want to call it, if we stop teachers from earning any new points, but only allow them to use up what they already had earned, I'm sure we have some teachers out there that didn't earn any more because they still had time to earn more. And they may be finding out about this for the first time tonight. In fact, some might be finding out about it for the first time when we go out to the schools and tell them about it. And it will wreak havoc with their strategy. Maybe they're five credits short of the Masters. Maybe they're five credits short of the masters, they talk to another friend who earned their masters, and now they're just in the waiting game, and this other teacher said, I might as well take my time getting my masters, or take my time earning my fifth academy.
So that waiting period is purely a function of the old, the rules, if you will, around the old model? It has nothing to do with this new?
Exactly, yes. And that was one of the motivations for, for allowing immediate movement once you earn your degree on the new model. No waiting. If you're in your fifth year and you've earned your master's degree, move. If you're in your seventeenth year and you earn your master's degree, move.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So that was motivation for that.
The other question I have, and I know Keith, we talked about this early, early on, maybe even when you first interviewed and we talked about this as being one, one of the priorities, so I appreciate the speed at which you guys have collaborated and worked on this. One of the things that we talked about was still wanting the ability to recognize, compensate, reward, I forget whatever vernacular you wanna use, but those teachers who do the, the advisory positions, whether it's coaching clubs, after-school activities, how or do we recognize or include that type of work in our go-forward model?
No. Not in this model. Um, we, if you may remember last March, when I asked you kind of for permission to create this and the new professional learning model, um, I purposely, I have a professional learning and leadership model ready to propose. Um, I wanted purposely to separate it from this, so people did not connect it. So yes, we will be recognizing that. Uh, if they're getting paid, they'll continue to be paid. It'll also count, if you will, on this, in this new model, but I'll share that with you. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose sight of that, because I think.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I'm, I'm still, you know, maybe I'm slow, but I'm still wrapping my head around that old system that I had problems with a long time ago, trying to figure it out. And I said this the last time, and I hate to be redundant, but the, the whole idea, when you have two programs, it gets to be more confusing, I feel, for the financial people to try to keep everything accurate. You could just move people over and, kinda like what Beth has brought up, you know, where they are, what they've accomplished, give them credit for that. And now move them onto the new model, and if they wanna continue with a masters, continue with a masters, and they get the credit for that, as they continue to move on. That way, you're going to one model, and again, I'm simplifying it, because I was in a much smaller district, and one could do those types of things, whereas we have more people to be identified with. But I still think, whether it's small or big, there's something that you can do to get them off of that old model, because it seemed like they're, you're gonna still have your coaching, you're still gonna be doing that, 'cause you get your percentages off of your salary with the coaching pay, so you have that. Your activity work, you're still getting that. So that has always been separate from, from this. But the bottom line is, how do we smooth this out? You know, and again, I like the idea of not going for, for five years. I'd rather go for three at the most. I would rather just say, we go, but I, I think there's more parts to that.
I still struggle with, what, what's the difference? If the burden is on the finance office and the administration to monitor it, and we're honoring, I think the word I used last time was, we're keeping the integrity of the old model, we're keeping our commitments to the people that are in the process of that, what does it hurt to keep doing that for five years?
And I think what I would like to add is that some of the people on the old model did it because they could save money, and rather pay for a masters, they could go and do the academies and not have to pay for that masters, and that was their goal. And one of the reasons from being on the compensation model is, is that you wanted people to, to grow your own here. And we've often talked about when we pay administrators to leave, because there's a big incentive to get your, your PhD or your administrative license, and, and then they leave, because we give them money. And so we thought that was a great idea, to let people get what we thought was important and what they thought was important, free. So if they're on their way to get that step on, into yellow, and they were doing it free, and then we're gonna say, oh, no, now you gotta go and get a masters, and everything you've done here in the academies don't count. You're gonna have to start over. That's a problem.
But we're saying that it wouldn't count for what they've already done.
Well, what university's gonna accept the academy of points?
But that's kind of irrelevant to the universities, it's more relevant to us, but we're giving them, not the universities.
Well, what I'm saying is.
When we place them on the new.
Oh, when we place them on the new, they won't have
They're in progress.
that progress.
They're, they haven't finished, they haven't accumulated all the points, but they're, they're on their way.
That's the problem when you're trying to rectify a problem that was created.
Well, some people think it's a problem and other people didn't. Other people did like the academies. They liked getting that free education without paying. So it's not fair to say that they didn't like it, some people did like it.
Yeah, I mean, unwinding this ball of crap is not.
It's not easy.
Yeah.
It's not easy.
Two, two points I would like to just point out. Um, one, um, I, I've heard this, this, I don't disagree much with what I've heard from WEA or the conversations we've had. I guess one, one comment I would maybe beg to differ with is, is if, if I'm a, a teacher making this salaries up in here, I don't see how that's disrespectful, right, or not valuing, compared to the teachers down here who are doing relatively the same work. Um, I've always struggled with that a little bit. Clearly, you know, our veteran teachers are, are valuable, you know, we, we heard some of it tonight, right? But I don't see this, at these kinds of salaries as, as disrespectful. So that's one point. The other point, um, is keep in mind that once we do transition to, to putting more money on the, the grid, we do it as a percentage. So I, I think we had done some calculation, you know, so the, the raises here will also be smaller than here. They'll be almost double down here, you know, five and six hundred versus two or three, whatever the numbers were. So this will grow faster, you know, than, than the bottom. And, and that's been the way we've been doing it.
That's a good point.
Uh, it's just not as obvious in this grid as it will be here. So just two of those points, too.
Well, on the, on the positive side, yeah, I don't wanna be a, a negative here about the new model or the transition, but you have eliminated some lines down at the bottom, so that with the new model, you can get to the highest salary faster than what it was with the other one. And I see that as a great concession as well.
That was an interest that we heard, for sure.
One thing that kind of, in your two comments there about the salary difference and doing relatively the same work, I, I take a little bit of issue with that, because there is so much that is brought with experience. Sure, somebody could be teaching, I don't even wanna say a subject, but let's just say, let's just say philosophy.
Sure.
Um, uh, somebody could be in their twenty-fifth year of teaching that, and somebody could be in their first year of teaching it, and, okay, the subject matter, but there's, there's a lot of difference there, just even how a classroom is run.
Yes.
And also, we even heard it tonight, the coaching, the mentoring, and these other leadership roles that veteran teachers do take on. So I don't know that I could equate relatively the same work. Um, the other thing is, I don't know where the rest of the board is, because I see we do have a motion to approve, and I don't know if everybody's there. I can say personally, I am not. Um, but I also, my concern is what I had addressed, as far as the fourteen hundreds and the thousands, and I'm glad to see that it's up from the six fifty, but I still think there's something there that could be worked on. But that's only me, so if there's other board members that might take a majority view, that's different from me. And, um, I also think that we don't need to rush. I know you wanna get the information out, but I also feel that we want something that is sustainable, that we're not coming back in three, five years and saying, oops, that was a problem. And if we do vote on this tonight, I feel like, it does feel still a little bit rushed. And for me, again, I personally still have concerns, but I, I don't know what Plan C would look like. So I don't know if other board members were here, if you're kind of at.
Can we put a motion forward to continue to work on this?
I don't think we need one.
We don't need one.
Keep working on it.
Yeah.
Keep working on it. Can I just make one point on this? I made this in a rush just minutes before the board meeting, but, uh, that steep part should go to year twenty-nine, then flatten out, and it looks like it hits the end, and so.
Right, draw here.
Drag it over a little bit. It's a graph on top of a graph that I've manually created, but, anyway. Uh, two weeks ago, tomorrow morning, two weeks ago, we met immediately in the morning, and we said, what did you hear last night? What did I hear last night? What did we all hear last night? Let's just take it all in and talk about good and bad, and making improvements, and the cost of each one of those improvements. And we heard a lot of real good stuff two weeks ago. I'm hearing, maybe not less good stuff, but not as much agreement on the good stuff tonight. Two weeks ago was pretty easy for us the next morning. We definitely heard this, we definitely heard this, we definitely heard this. Let's talk some out and see if we can make something work. Uh, tonight, if we took a motion or we didn't, and we're having that same conversation tomorrow morning, I'm looking at him and he's looking at me, and don't know where to go.
One thing I'm finding myself curious about is, when you said, as we move this forward and we put a percentage on the sales, it's gonna grow more at the top. I'd like to see that, how that's gonna look over years, when you start putting, just to see what the progression would be? 'Cause maybe I'm wrong, maybe the thousands shouldn't be there. I, I'm thinking that's a good change now, but.
It's gonna be percentage growth, so the rate will change the same, but the dollar amounts will change faster at the top, just like any other percent. If you think about the million-dollar affordability level again, which I'm hoping changes sometime, I really do. I hope we can afford more than a million dollars on new money for teachers. But if we use that million-dollar threshold, and we know that movement, pure movement, without putting a percent, is eight hundred seventy-five thousand or eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. One hundred fifty thousand dollars of percent doesn't allow for much of a percent.
Right.
It's point fifteen or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
So.
It's not gonna grow.
Point one five. You can see it growing, and it, just like any other exponential curve. It starts really, really flat for a long time, and then it looks like it's getting steeper when if you zone in on any specific small part, it's pretty flat, at fifteen percent.
I mean, history has shown that, that we're not, we can continue to massage this over time as well. I mean, God knows, we did it to this last thing a number of times, right there. And it's, there's nothing that prohibits us, should we have additional sustained revenue sources? Or should we recognize there's something in this model that just doesn't work? Like we did, you know, a few times with the other one. There's nothing that prohibits us from addressing.
Yeah, I would say more that the new model, if we talk about a throttle and a brake, it certainly has a throttle, right? If, if we've, uh, come upon some good times, or the state lawmakers see that schools are underfunded, and money comes our way, it certainly has a throttle. The brakes, I'm a little bit more worried about, because once you take away the percent movement, you're gonna have a hard time taking away the movement, the, the step movement. It's almost a minimal obligation. Everybody's moving. People that get a master's degree are moving three. People with the national board are moving two. So almost the minimal cost, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. What happens if we fall on hard times and we can't afford eight hundred fifty thousand dollars? Now, you can't go lower than that, really. You're creating an obligation to at least spend eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in new money every year for movement, nothing else. The throttle, I'm not worried about. If we wanted to put ten percent on the model, we could easily do that. Don't see that happening in any kind of movement.
One other thing I'm hearing, maybe it's not just Gemini, but exploring shortening that transition period. I don't know, does anybody else on the board feel like that transition period should be a little shorter?
No. I think, I think that's a very big disadvantage to the people who've been working towards that goal.
And I still don't understand what the benefit would be, whether you call it five years, or five months, or five days.
I, in fact, if I can press you on that a little bit.
Okay.
What would, what would your perceived advantage be in shortening that?
Well, first of all, you got people coming in and they don't get a choice. So they see the old model and how they could've grown in the first five, four, three, two years, but they're not gonna have that choice. So is that a perceived disadvantage?
But whether they don't have that choice in three years or five years, they still don't have that choice.
They don't have that choice walking in the door, do they?
They don't.
No, but they're hiring on their terms. That's, that's part of the term of hiring, and they can choose to go elsewhere if they don't like the terms of hiring.
I mean, there, you could keep it open for ten years or twenty years, it doesn't matter for a new hire.
It does for me in the operation.
Right. But for a new employee,
Yes.
they don't have the option, so it doesn't matter, the, the transition out is only impacting those that are in it.
Yes, and, and that's the reason I wanna press you on that, because if you're thinking, let's make the transition shorter to make it easier on the business department, I'm gonna tell you, save your breath, because we're already recommending something that
Okay.
we know we're getting ourselves into. It's five years of keeping three models alive, really. You're gonna have the old model, the new model, the transition costs. Will transition cost money? Is there somebody that's ready to get, or stands to get a five thousand dollar increase that wouldn't if we collapsed the transition to zero? Almost certainly, yes. Are we ready to say to that person, we wanna redistribute that five thousand dollars elsewhere that we told you five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, a month ago, really, two months ago, we told you, if you do this, you get a four thousand dollar raise? And some people aren't tuned into this discussion right now. They have, they don't have a clue that this is even going on. 'Cause they're worried about teaching and learning. And they're gonna find out when we go out to the sites, here's what the new plan is, and you've got a year to transition. Thanks for telling me now, I'm enrolled in academies and I'm taking masters, you can try some things like that. So if you're thinking the implementation of it is.
The five thousand dollar increases, I'm thinking about some of those huge increases.
Well, you did something about two years, about a year and a half ago, and take away a lot of those increases with raising the, the yellow, right? We, we built up the yellow, so the big increases weren't quite as big.
So you don't see that as a potential issue?
My next year, we'll have built it up all the way, so it's not, we're done with that transition.
From the standpoint of timing, and some folks feel that this is rushed, what is a drop dead date that you guys would like to have this thing finalized by?
Um, if we work backwards, kind of off the top of my head, people have to tell us, go or no-go on February fifteenth is what we're proposing. So we need to, to get to them, you know, and be able to explain. And, and we're, we're picturing something similar to the, you know, the insurance meetings or the listening sessions, right, going out, you know. We'll, we'll do something video quick for people who can do it easily, right? Go ahead and make a decision, then we'll do some stuff in person. And then I'm sure we'll have a number of people who have individual questions. Um, so I would like to give them at least a, you know, once they understand it, at least a few weeks to, um, you know, do their own calculations and then, and then make the decision. So if we back it up, say we give them a month, that'd be January fifteen. Uh, boy, November would be really tight.
So if we set October, at the October meeting, if individual board members have specific concerns or questions or issues that they can share with you, and you, that you guys can go back, again, caucus about, figure out what you wanna do, and if we rectified those in the next thirty days, we could have this discussion hopefully much shorter in October and finalize it?
Yes, yes, and yes. And if you think about the February fifteenth date, and that's where you're back mapping from.
Yep.
That's more flexible than you might think. The February fifteenth date isn't as important as, you know, it wasn't the proposal. I would like people to make the decision by February fifteenth, because we get serious about costing the next year February fifteenth. I'm more worried about people that are marching along, getting their academies and higher ed and masters degrees, and they don't know this is happening. And every day, they're earning more points, and every day, they're earning more credits towards their master's degree. They're doing that as we speak. And the quicker we can get out there and tell them, hold on, it might be in your best interest to stop doing this, the quicker we can tell them that, the better off we're gonna be. If we're telling them that when the first semester is done.
Well, that's why, that's something, October, we're.
Yep. So don't worry about the February fifteenth, 'cause that is pretty flexible.
And I'm quite happy with what we've got here.
Let's expedite it.
Okay, so, so when we discussed this last time, that was the original end timeline, if I'm not mistaken. We did talk about October, so that's why I was surprised to see a motion for tonight. So that's why I was surprised to see a motion for tonight. And I know it's just in case.
Yep.
But I thought that was what we discussed, was having this by October. So I, I think that we should stick with that. I mean, it sounds, I don't know if some people are ready to move on this. I'm not, but I could be in the minority.
I'm fine, but I think I'm.
Let's take it, let's put it forward.
All you need is a motion in a second, just procedurally, but.
Are you making a motion?
I guess I'm okay with if, if people are still uncomfortable. This is a big deal, right?
This is a big deal.
We, we've been talking about this for a while. We've incurred damage from the other one. This is a big deal to give everybody one last opportunity, again, specific issues, questions, concerns, so you guys don't get together, whether it's tomorrow or next week, and say, "What the hell did they want us to do?" Oh, I respect that, I mean, that's, you know.
Exactly what you're going to ask.
Well, it's, it's time consuming to try to handle people's minds.
And I respect all the work that went into this. And when I ask questions about it, it's not because I'm taking apart the work.
We don't do that.
But I think it becomes very complicated.
It's all fun. It's all fun.
I think it's very complicated for Bob and Keith. If one individual school board member says, "Well, this is the part I don't like." Well, maybe the other people are fine with it. So how much time do they invest in what as a collective group we're concerned with? I mean, that's pretty time consuming.
Well, and I, I heard, I agree with you. I heard two things, right? It was the, the potential.
Transition time.
Yeah. And also, what does it look like if we did a consistent interval or a consistent increase across each interval? Were the, the two big ones, I guess that I heard.
And I thought those questions were answered.
I did too. I did too, but apparently they're not, so.
Well, who didn't think they weren't answered?
Well, you know, just to, to come to Pat's defense, sorry. No, no, um. So, you know, I, it's a big decision and I want the board to be comfortable. But I guess what I'm hearing you say is, you know, in, in, if we keep this thing as affordable as it is, what would our, what would our, where did I go? Here we are, somewhere around here, we have a salary schedule. What would our, what would our steps be, right? Well, somewhere in here, somewhere back there. And if we were to, if we, if we were to shorten it, how would we do it? Now, that would be my biggest question because we've got people who have earned their points, people who haven't. I mean, we've thought about it. We haven't written it up per se. Is that what we're looking for?
I would think you would have to.
Why is five years the magic number? Is there, maybe if I understood that a little bit?
Well, it, it, it came back to, I'm going the wrong way. It came down to, no, I was going the right way. It came down to two things. One, as we look at the number of people who have earned their, uh, points and are waiting or have some, you know, we can kind of, Chris Nyman kind of knows, has a pretty good feel for the landscape and who's on a path, you know, to transition some. We felt that five, well, we know there's some that could go seven. Some people want to go seven. Some people, a lot of people will be done, you know, three and four. So we thought five was kind of a.
That captures most everybody in that situation, is what you're saying?
And gives people enough room time to, to, to finish out most of their plans, my.
Sure, I don't have my computer available because being used.
Yeah.
But the percentage that we're anticipating moving each of the next five years, sixty percent going to the new model, quickly turns into like seventy-five percent and goes up to ninety and ninety-five percent would be transitioned to the new model by that last opportunity. So we would be asking five percent of the people to move to the new model. Numbers sound arbitrary. And they come from fifty or so individual situations. What's this person's situation? Where would they move? What's this person's situation? And you can real quickly determine if a person has a vertical and a horizontal move on the old model, they're staying. That's eighteen hundred dollars. That's bigger than anything on the new model, right? So if you've got a double opportunity, you're staying. And if we start saying a thousand, a thousand, a thousand for everybody, the single moves are about eleven hundred eighty-six or something like that. They're staying. So now, you don't have much incentive to move if it's eleven thousand, eleven, eleven hundred, eleven hundred, eleven hundred. Now, the tier movements, although green to blue isn't a huge increase. Blue to purple isn't a huge increase. Purple to yellow, if you anticipate a tier movement from purple to yellow in the next eight years, you want the transition to be eight years because that's the payoff, right? The purple to yellow is the big payoff. So you can almost always find a person that's going to transition to yellow in eight years or nine years. We had the Teacher Compensation Model Review Team, TICMIR, or whatever it was acronym, we met and we actually changed a rule based on somebody that had a plan for moving into yellow in 2028, I think it was. And we had these one-time incentives. If you move from here to here, three thousand. If you move from here to here, two thousand. Those expire in 2028. Because people have plans. So you can always find that the next example of someone that trusted the old model, did exactly what they were supposed to do for the financial incentive and now we're telling them it's different.
So the changes that you made where you put a thousand at the top and a little less at the bottom, does, do you think that affects people transitioning over or not too much?
Thousand at the top.
No, with the new one.
The new one?
The Plan B of the new model.
Let's say oh two five.
Where you changed the six fifty to a thousand. Will that affect some people moving?
Probably not the bottom part because a lot of those people, if you're in yellow already and you like professional development or you're earning a bunch of credits or you earn them already and you're just waiting to use them. If you're already in yellow, eighteen hundred dollar increase, you'll stay. You'll stay on the, on the old model unless you don't like doing a leadership plan or you don't like following through on the leadership plan and some of those things. But if you're in yellow, eighteen hundred dollar move, you'll stay. But if you're in the bottom of purple, which a lot of people are, they're exchanging, being frozen, so to speak. And maybe under the old model, they were getting a percent increase. They're moving and getting a one thousand dollar increase and the potential move up to eighty. We think most of them will move. A new teacher, another easy example. You know a lot of people that are new teachers, forty thousand one hundred forty-three or whatever, total forty-three thousand dollars. People that are new. They're so far away from the payoff of going to purple to yellow that no matter what transition we build, it's probably not going to happen for them. They're moving to the new model.
Right.
So some of them are pretty easy. But the people that are allowed to move, two moves, vertical, horizontal, especially if they already earn the points, they're staying on the old.
So the only two changes that we're talking about is, one is we want possibly shorten up the change.
Yeah, I'm withdrawing my request for that.
Okay. So the only thing is to even out the, or more even.
That's my question. Are board members at least interested in seeing? And maybe, maybe we bring Plan B back, but are you interested in at least seeing a Plan C where there's a more equitable, um, raise each year? So we have either less differential or it's the same every year.
I think it's going to be, when you start adding the percentage in, it, it's not going to be that far off.
I don't want it to be exactly the same.
I'm quite happy with what we, what Plan B.
Can I just ask, I don't know if you, Bob and I talked about it, we don't like doing, you know, making changes on the fly. But Bob, let's say for argument's sake, two percent. At some point we add two percent, right? And if you don't feel comfortable doing this, you know, to say, "I don't want to do that." You know, do you know what the, you know, what, what the?
Math on my head in front of all these people, you kidding me? No? I'll apply by one point zero two. Two percent, right? Two percent forty-three is eighty-six, eight hundred sixteen dollars.
So it, it will expand, you know, it will grow.
But two percent is, right now, the moves alone, we think about forty million dollars in teacher salary, the moves alone are over eight hundred thousand dollars. So the moves alone are over two percent.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion just to get everybody on the record so you know what the numbers are here and how much wants change in this and how many are happy with this. So I'm going to make the motion that we accept this. And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me. Extension? Motion carries.
The motion is carried, but now it's gotten to the point where the question is, what are we going to direct them to do? We're going to move forward now?
You just approved this.
We just approved Plan B.
We're going to approve it and not going to do any work with it.
No.
You just approved it in the first regular meeting that I came to. Okay. Thank you, Bob. And Keith, I know it was an immense amount of work, so thank you. Okay, so. We are on approving the list of legal firms.
Make a motion to approve. Both second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion to approve the list of law firms. The board and district shall access for legal services, if necessary, by the supercharge of schools or his designate approved. All right, the next item on the agenda is setting the annual meeting date and location. This also, of course, comes to us from the EdOps committee meeting, seeking a motion to approve Monday, September 23rd, 2019 as the date for the 2019-2020 budget hearing and annual meeting. The meeting will be held at six o'clock in the Nicholson Boardroom at the Longfellow Administration Center, beginning with the budget hearing, followed by the annual meeting.
So move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Okay, next is the share equalized value estimates. Is there a summary to be provided?
Only one that you saw from the Ops meeting two weeks ago. I don't know all the numbers off the top of my head. It's in there.
Yes, there was, um, no action on this. So we're moving to a recommendation for the 2019-2020 budget. All right, so that, seeking a motion to approve a preliminary 2019-2020 general fund budget of one hundred five million dollars, one hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars for expenses and one hundred five million dollars, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars for revenue for presentation at the annual meeting and budget hearing on September 23rd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Extention? Motion carries. Okay, then we have a recommendation for the 2019-2020 tax levy. Here, seeking a motion to approve a projected tax levy of forty-six million dollars, one hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars for presentation at the annual meeting and budget hearing on September 23rd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Next, we're moving on to Policy 5610, the High School Activities Code. Of course, we spent some time on this in committee meetings. The board is now to approve the Policy 5610 High School Activities Code as revised. Seeking a motion on that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're on to, um, Policy Resolution and Legislation Committee of the whole. And we have proposed 2020 WASP resolutions. So we have revised one. This is Resolution in Support of New Moneys for Full-Time Substitute Teachers in Wisconsin Public Schools. It has been revised substantially, so I hope everybody has had a chance to read that.
And thank you, Tricia, for the wonderful work.
You're welcome, Jean. Does anybody have any comments, questions, discussion on it? If not, I am seeking a motion to approve the proposed resolution in support of new monies for full-time substitute teachers in Wisconsin schools.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Also, under this agenda item, I do want to give the board a full update about our other WASP resolutions. We have two other resolutions, so we will be submitting three. And I do think that is really great that the WASP School Board is taking, um, this, uh, action in submitting resolutions. I do want to give you an update as far as seeking cosponsorships. That had been a discussion as early as July on the mascot resolution. Here are the, um, full list of cosponsors. Madison Metropolitan, Sun Prairie, Shorewood, Appleton, Shawno, Black River Falls, La Crosse, D.C. Everest, Milwaukee Public Schools, Wauwatosa, Prescott, and Sheboygan. And I should say that Green Bay Area Public Schools is taking it up tonight. I do want to say thank you to each of those districts for signing on to co-sponsor. And I'm not sure who's all going to be here for next week's meeting, but I was going to handwrite cards that we could all sign and send to each district. Maybe you've picked up that thank you cards are kind of important to me. So hopefully you'll be here or otherwise I'll just leave them with Cassie at some point for you to sign them, to thank them for, um, co-sponsoring with us. I just wanted to point out as it relates to WASP resolutions that, um, one of our actions did create a, an unintentional statewide discussion. I don't think anybody anticipated that when we talked about cosponsorship. So thank you for writing that out. And secondly, I would just want to point out that I think, um, seeking cosponsorship, one of the things that it did was cause other boards that don't typically submit resolutions to start discussing within their boards, hey, what could we be doing also? So we might see more, more activity from other boards submitting other resolutions that are going to be beneficial educational policy in our state as a result. And then finally, um, keeping these on the agenda year round, there presumably will be months where we really don't have anything to talk about, but then we don't have to feel rushed, um, when it comes to submission deadline. And I would also encourage administration, Dr. Hiltz, if, if there are things that you see that would be ideal for submissions, or for submit, for resolutions to WASP, to please bring those suggestions to us because you are in the better position than us for a lot of things to identify where maybe there would be a, a, an appropriate resolution. So that is the other information I wanted to share on the WASP resolutions. Okay, any, uh, comments, questions, concerns?
Have you heard from any other board, boards from up north or anything?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, I heard anything. So it's been predominantly down south here.
Yes.
Prescott being west.
Yes.
Normally think of WASP as being south.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It is.
Okay.
Half the state figures that one out.
Okay, so then, um, not hearing any other questions or comments, we'll move on to Neola Policies for Review.
And this is just the 1,000 series from the last, uh, PRL or whichever meeting we shared them at, just sort of if, if board members had questions or suggestions. We'll continue with a running list.
So you're not seeking a motion on this though, right?
No.
Okay. Okay, any comments, questions on those or you'll send them directly to Dr. Hiltz if you have them? Okay, then let's move on to new business, Agenda Item 11, EdOps Committee Meeting. So we had the Whole Child, Whole WASP Short Cycle Report. No action needed on that, um, but that was very beneficial to hear that short cycle report. So thank you again to everybody on that. Moving on, the request from La Crosse Club to co-op with Newman High School. And we did, of course, discuss this in the EdOps meeting and I'm seeking a motion to deny allowing students from Newman High School to play on the WASP La Crosse Club team.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Motion carries.
It seems to me on that one, we also recommended though that we develop a policy in that regard so that we have something consistent.
Yes, that's correct. We did have a discussion about some standards or some kind of, something. Okay, then from the PRL Committee tonight, we have a request to change graduation time and date for the WASP West 2020 Graduation Ceremony. And I'm seeking a motion. And I'm seeking a motion to approve the change of the twenty twenty graduation date and time for WASA West to Friday, May twenty-ninth at eight P.M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to agenda item twelve, committee updates and board referrals. First here is the WCAN committee appointment. And originally Teresa Miles had been appointed and serving a long time on this and as well as other appointments. And then I had heard of interest from another board member and Teresa indicated that she would be willing to step back from it.
Oh, and I think it's a wonderful thing for Jim to take on, so thank you, Jim.
Okay, so we're going to appoint Jim Boucher as the new representative to the WCAN Committee and thank Teresa Miles for her service on that, so thank you very much. All right, moving on to open forum, agenda item thirteen. We're at Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Board members, does anybody have any professional growth and development to share this month?
Last week at the CISA meeting, I just have one thing to share. With that licensed program that CISA nine is running, we now have twenty-eight people from CISA nine enrolled in our getting a license. If you have a, already have a college degree, but you don't have an education license. So, just the growth in this program. Two years ago, we had seven people. This year, we have twenty-eight that are going through the program so that they will be licensed at the end of the year with a credited license from DPI. And of those twenty-eight, twelve of them are seeking special ed degrees. So, that's phenomenal and I think it's another way to get people into the field. And for those people who don't know, Al Betri, he's the one who runs it. And he was a former teacher at Horace Mann and he's fantastic. And just remind people, you can do it two ways. You can accept a job and then be part of the program for eight thousand dollars and be observed and do coursework on weekends and online. Or you can do the whole program and not, and then just get a student teaching position where you're supervised. So, it's great and it's growing.
Great, thank you, Teresa. Any other professional growth and development to report? Okay, hearing none. Going on to superintendent commentary, Dr. Hiltz, anything?
Um, no, I, I will let you know, the board know I won't be here for the next meeting, which is the annual meeting. Luckily, Mr. Tess will be taking over, running the show.
Okay, all right, thank you for letting us know. Presiding Officer Commentary, I don't have anything except to enter into the record the board member liaison report. Thank you, everybody, for your activities. With that, then we're going to convene into executive session to discuss the matter earlier from the agenda.
So, just point of protocol, so we'll go upstairs. We'll come back on here for the, any action and open because we have to come back where we're posted soon.
Okay, so we had, we had pulled off the item of new hires from the consent agenda for discussion in accordance with Wisconsin statute and executive session. And we are now convening back into open to vote on those. My understanding is that we are going to vote on the new hires separately? Okay, all right. I just think we have the new.
Can I, um, time out?
Sure.
As I'm thinking about in open session, I don't think we should be naming.
Okay.
Personnel.
Individual staff.
Okay, you know, I was wondering too. I'm thinking that we should just.
Just do one vote.
Yeah, I think we're just going to have to vote on the new hire item generally.
Yeah.
I think that's very smart.
Okay, so.
And then just vote against it.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, and if we.
I only disagree with one, but.
Well, as a promise, then we, if, if it were to not go through all three, would be incorrect.
So.
Could they be brought back then as?
So, we roll call it and Jane can state for the record that she just.
We can always do a roll call.
Do you want to do a roll call and you can state for the record what you're stating, Jane? That you just have concern about one?
Yeah.
I think that's still general. Do you think, Dr. Hiltz?
Order one, two and three?
No.
It doesn't.
No.
We're just doing generally.
I'm just one of the three, not.
Yeah, we're not specifying. We're specifically not specifying. Okay. Okay, then I'm seeking a motion to approve the new hires.
So moved.
Second.
And this will be, we'll give this a roll call vote.
Okay, so, so again, you know, we've got three individuals. We can then hold another vote on a more limited list.
If this vote doesn't carry.
Carry.
We could, yeah.
And we could do that. And how do we end up doing that without in the end naming anyone in the session?
Good question, I don't know.
To me, we need to know how to do this before we can take any votes.
I think we're being overly cautious because we'd be having this vote if there was only one name on the list.
That is true, we would, but.
And I've complained about this process in the past because when it comes to us, it's ready, done, deal. It's supposed to just kind of be a rubber stamp, but if my name is on it, then I have to speak up. So, to prevent this in the future, they need to change it in Madison.
If it passes, it's a non-issue, right?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not worried actually. So, just because Jane wants to be able to state for the record that she is, has a concern about one and not all of the hires, that's why I suggested roll call. Okay, you ready? Mm-hmm. Okay. Jane Roche?
No, but only in the case of one of the three.
Lance Traub?
Yes.
Leah Webster?
Yes.
Tricia, oh, sorry, James Boucher?
Yes.
Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
No.
Tricia Zunker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for that. Now, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.